Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Spokane County Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, May the 16th. It is nine oh two. Sorry for the late start. I should call the meeting to order. Housekeeping, the public may participate in person or remotely by utilizing our web link and telephone conference links, star nine to raise hand and star six to speak. Individuals are limited to one three-minute comment period for any item. Please keep your comments specific to the current agenda item. Chat is not supported. We have commissioners, we have four commissioners present and Logan Camporelli is on the line. We will start with Logan to introduce herself and then we'll start over there with Lonnie after that.
Good morning, everyone. Logan Camporelli.
Thanks. Thanks for being here.
Lonnie Edwards.
Melissa Whitstruck.
Clyde Hossi.
And I'm Stephen Puller, Chairman. First order business is open forum. This is the part of the program where the public comment on any item that's not on this current agenda. The agenda has been published. There are several items on here. But anybody now is the time when you come and say, hey, I want to talk to you about this or that. It's now is your time. Either online or in the audience. I have a yellow slip. It says here rezoning property. So let's hear that. That would be something that's not on our agenda. Okay, Suzanne Saval, would you like to address us? Please come forward. Say that right, Saval or Saval? Saval? Oh, oh, perfect. I passed.
I'm here today again to continue my intention to work with the Spokane County Planning Board to consider changing the map for the 2026 zoning comprehensive plan to designate my property as part of the urban growth area expansion zone in the county's ongoing land capacity analysis slated to be completed June through September 2024, I believe. Having attended two planning commission meetings, I'm now ready to provide three new pieces of information to the commission when making decisions recording regarding the LCA. I had sent a couple of documents and it didn't go through. So I'll send those today. So I don't have the documents with me, but later today they will be with you, with her. Okay, so the first item that is new is I have a signed letter from Pasadena Irrigation that there's no need to for additional utility easements in my plot. I thought there was going to have to be another easement and there's not. Second, after speaking with an engineer from Public Works yesterday, I'm not required to have a sewer line septic. Instead, a septic system will be required. So that is less impact to my neighbors in my community to not have that. That was a different than I'd information than I'd received earlier in my conquest with this. And then the third point is that in the area north of Francis Orchard Prairie School District is pursuing a bond for a new school in this November, November 2024 in response to growing a number of homes with families. The LCA and the UGA, I found out from attending meetings that that analysis points out that the Bigelow Gulch Argon area has shown substantial growth. So I'm showing the need for additional homes in my area. Let's see. So I understand that the planning commission's goal is to review and make recommendations to the commission, usually considering developments. My request is less impactful. Coming with the request to have the right to sell my home of 38 years so that I may build a small dwelling for my retirement. Receiving the same consideration as developers to change the urban to change the UGA on my part. So I realized that the 2026 plan will not be complete for two years. However, I also know that just like last year, just last year, there were two cases in the same rural traditional zone that I live in that were able to build on less than 10 acres in order to create new businesses. That's that. And I wonder if you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Could you refresh my memory on the location approximately?
Yes, I'm sorry that I did not say that my address. So it's 6412 North Jensen Road. And it's just north of Northwoods and south of Bigelow Gulch. So there's a little plot of land there that. Yes.
That's kind of over by the fire department.
It's just south of the fire department. Correct.
Any other comments, any questions, Logan? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time and consideration.
Scott assumed her comments now, this is, I think, the third time she's been here have been duly noted by stat.
Yes.
Thank you absolutely because the heavy lifting starts in your shop.
Okay. All right.
Loud and clear. Thank you. Without exception, the chair would ask that we switch the order of presentations and start with the public participation program first. This is an open hearing. Public hearing is now open. I guess it's continuing to be open. If there's no objection, so order. Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've seen this now several times. We have left this hearing open for a considerable amount of time to allow people to comment extensively on this. We have received some comments. We'll go through those kind of at the end here. If we can get this to go, there we go. As a reminder, the RCW statute talks about ensuring public participation in all Growth Management Act planning activities. The WAC or the rules add some detail to that. The Public Participation Program guidelines were updated earlier in this cycle in July of 22. And the countywide planning policies were updated and also in the end of 2022. Those kind of our founding foundation documents to move this along. You can see here kind of the objectives of this. Early and continuous public participation is the goal for what we're doing in the 26 process. If, as you recall, in the Public Participation Program guidelines, we committed to two things. One, a fairly extensive review period saying that an item or an action being prepared for your consideration will be posted at least 21 days ahead of time to provide extra time for public review beyond the usual 15-day notice. Documents that are works in progress will be up online seven days before a meeting. Now, so even if something is working, it's through through the system. There's a chance to review that draft work ahead of your system. And you can, I guess you can see the rest of these here. Kind of our philosophy of moving this forward. We want to be able to bring in a wide variety of interested parties and stakeholders. Not simply people that are already in the growth and development business. This comprehensive plan is something that stretches, you know, well beyond a simple land use plan. All aspects of the county growth and development are tied back to this. So capital facilities planning and our public works in our parks areas has to be guided by the goals and objectives in the plan. So these, these things suggest that we want to talk to people beyond those that are in the business, so to speak. And so we're, our staff has put together a really outstanding program to do that. Some of the initiatives, including what we call equitable engagement. You can see that here, meeting people where they are. A goal, and that's, we're going to accomplish that in at least two broad ways. One will be something that you're going to hear about later this morning. The series of kickoff meetings where we're going out to a series of libraries and introducing the comprehensive plan process, what it is, how you can be involved, what some of the objectives are. And then also we're, we're working on building a really robust virtual online presence so people can participate. We can reach them without having to have people come down here, for example, or just on a Zoom meeting at a specific time. But they can look at things and make comments on a nearly continual basis. And you can see again, the variety of initiatives that we're, we're considering. As we had mentioned, the website of other, I'm sorry, other initiatives, consultations and things that will be going on. Timeline, we're clearly into the second quarter. So we're making, making some of these things kind of as fast as we can get back out and do them. The goal, and we've been working in advance of approval of this anticipating that you will make a favorable recommendation to the board. And the board continues to, or will adopt it formally in 25, continuing those forums, continuing those meetings. Some of this becomes iterative as we start to hear about the various elements. We start to take those comments, make recommendation changes, bring them back for future comment. And then in 26, we're mostly wrapping up. Well, the package will be substantially complete and will be then a chance to look at it as a whole rather than as discreet packages. So here's what we've seen. We have made some changes to the narrative. We've made some changes to points. The next slide has a lot of information on it. Somewhat hard to see, but we wanted to give you and our audience a sense of how we reacted to comments we see from the public already. And to add those into this program, again, reflecting their comments. And so Joshua Warwick was our key architect of this, along with the rest of our team. And they've done, I believe, an outstanding job of putting together a program that will serve us well moving forward. So we're here today. We hope to be, again, with your favorable recommendation, we will be briefing the board on the fourth and asking for their consideration on the 11th. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to stand aside for any additional public comment.
Thank you. This is a public hearing and now would be the time for people to weigh in on this matter. Anyone have their raised, hands raised online? And anyone in the audience, you have the floor. Paul there? Is your hand up? Okay, Paul.
Good morning, everyone. This is Paul Croft, 3311 East Norah Court, Spokane, Washington. You may hear from my voice that I'm responding very badly to this spring season. But I just want to make two comments. One is I noticed that quite a few of the observations I made initially have been addressed. It's kind of editing stuff. But I have to tell you, I really appreciate that. It, you know, takes take some time to go through this. So there's that. Thank you, staff. Thank you very much for that. The other comment has to do with the elision, the taking out of open space from the parks chapter. I want to read to you goal number nine of of the Growth Management Act. Retain open space and green space, enhance recreational opportunities, enhance fish and wildlife habitat, increase access to natural resource lands and water and develop parks and recreational facilities. By leaving open space out, you are not addressing that goal of the Growth Management Act. And there are, and I hope that that will be reconsidered. The text says that you may do that in one place and then in another place it says, not so much. But I just want to leave that on the table because there are going to be stakeholders that are going to advocate in the same way. Those are my only two comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, please. Let me address that. We had, we have no intention of leaving anything out. I think what Paul's referring to is probably an organizational change upfront. If it makes sense or if otherwise to recombine or make that in a stronger fashion, we fully intend to do that. The commitment to our rural areas, our open space areas, our environmental and wildlife corridors is something that we want to make a heavy emphasis on in this plan. That was maybe not as big in some other ones. So I'm confident we will be able to satisfy his concern.
Thank you. Any other public testimony? Also, any person online besides our commissioner? Anyone in the audience would like to speak? Now is the time. If not, the chair will entertain a motion to close public testimony on this matter. Do I hear a motion? Without, well, let's just say without objection. Public testimony is now closed. Chair will entertain a motion to take this guiding document for public participation as it relates to the 2026 comprehensive plan period update and make a recommendation of approval by this planning commission to the county commissioners.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Did you say yes? Logan, you made a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Looking for a second.
Thank you. Second, second, Clyde. Four is open for discussion on the motion.
I'll just say I appreciate staff making a bunch of the changes that came from the comments. It looks like earnest effort to incorporate as much of that feedback was made and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Melissa?
Yes, I too want to commend the staff for the incorporation of public comment. It's a very progressive public participation plan. I'm very excited to see that happening for all of the citizens of Spokane County. I do, I do just want to hopefully emphasize the fact that it's very difficult, I found, for people to in the city and outlying areas and towns to understand why the Spokane County Comprehensive Plan is so important to them and and making those continual efforts to say, because that's you too. And this is why it matters to you. That really, I find, helps engage people in getting to meetings or going to the Zoom meeting or, or any of that is like, oh, this is the entire county and I'm part of that. So that's really, really a special thing to emphasize. And I appreciate the efforts to get out there in the public. It's a large county, a lot of places to cover. One other thing, can you go to the timeline? I'm not sure if that's going to be incorporated in another presentation, but it said, I think it said March 16th and maybe it meant May 16th?
Oh, that could be.
Because we have had several meetings. I just want to make sure that we don't leave one out.
Well, it slipped by us. Yes, it should have said May.
Okay.
Should have said today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lonnie?
I think it's great and with what the staff is doing, I just second Melissa. I mean, this is our backyard, right? So completely care about it.
Clyde?
After going through a lot of this over the many years, I would have to really second the leadership that Scott has given us and, and along with his staff. So I really appreciate, we've got to keep people informed because it is their community.
We appreciate that, Clyde. And, and again, you know, Joshua Warwick is the chief author behind this. Michael Weir was a big part of that. Our long-range team is really going to serve the county well. Very happy.
Okay, are we ready for the vote? For those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All opposed by saying nay. Hearing no nays, this motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a long, long journey and thank, nice work.
Yeah, it's, it's only the beginning of another journey.
I understand the building blocks.
Yep.
Public hearing is hereby open for the active transportation plan.
We're happy to have back before you Jamie Hayes, our transportation planning staff who will walk you, or at least take questions. You've seen the presentation before. We have that. And she can give you highlights of that and also take any comments you may have.
Thank you. Good morning, Planning Commission. My name is Jamie Hayes. I'm the Senior Project Manager for the Public Works Department. And I am here again before you to talk about, take any questions about the active transportation plan you might have. I don't think that you would like me to go through the whole entire plan again. And I just want to reiterate that this is going to be an appendix to the 2026 Comprehensive Plan. The only changes that were made were the active, the term active transportation from pedestrian and bicycle master plan, which comes from House Bill 1181, effective June 23rd of last year and needs to be in compliance by June 30th, 2026, which we just did. And let's see, this is a major component to funding. We get points for having this plan and that it is approved. And so we can make safety and roadway improvements. This is an equity and an environmental issue for Spokane County, which is also something that we get points on when we are seeking funding for road improvements as well. This is intended for urban and semi-urban environments, not deeply rural components of our county, pedestrian generating places. The goals are to improve safety, provide a connected network of sidewalks, trails, bike lanes, pathways that are ADA accessible. Encourage everyone to use them, improve the health and livability of the county and increase transportation options within Spokane County. And there you go. There is the, the data that we're seeing more pedestrians and bicyclists hit. That is a five-year trend. And just going to scroll through this. These are improvements that need to be made. And this is what's in a very context sensitive, specific to every single project, this will change. But this is just good examples of things that have come from being able to make these types of improvements. I go through the definition of trail and pathways. I know that that has been a public complaint that trails were not included. Trails are included in this document. It's referred to through the parks and rec departments and as well as a class one trail, meaning separated pathways such as a centennial trail. So in every context that you can imagine, trails have been included, referred to, linked to everything. And there has been a lot of differentiation between urban, semi-urban and what rural means and where it is appropriate to put these types of places. Once again, pedestrian generating people, places people can go to work to get food, essential services, schools, parks, et cetera. And then public engagement has been something that's been criticized as well. You can see that this has been an ongoing process. I meet with a bicycle club next Monday to give them an update on this plan. You can see that this has been an ongoing process. I meet with the Bicycle Club next Monday to give them an update on this plan, as well as the improvements that we've made. Over 600 responses, bike swaps, going to bicycle shops, like kind of included in what Scott had said, going out to meet the public where they are at, because that's what they care about. It's hard for them to get to us sometimes. And not necessarily fair for them to ask for, to ask them to come to us every single time. And I think that is a recap, but I will stand for any questions you might have about this.
Thank you. Last time you were before us, there were some comments, had some changes, some tweaking that you had to address in this role in this new plan?
The first time around, when it was the pedestrian plan and the bicycle master plan, this is one combined plan, and that is where the trails issue came up. And like I said, the trails issue is part of the comprehensive plan as well. So we have natural areas, parks, rec, trail, you know, that is one area of the comprehensive plan. This is a sub-transportation component of the comprehensive plan. Working in conjunction with the transportation element with the comprehensive plan, these all work together, working in harmony with Spokane Regional Transportation Council's, their transportation plan. So everything's working together with STA's updated plan that they're working on. This is all a very complicated, but harmonious update to these regional plans as well as our county plans.
What a great presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Comments from the commission? Oh, did you like to speak? Is it on this matter?
Yeah.
Public testimony. Please come forward. Name and address.
Thank you, Lunell Hot, South 7802 Cheney Spokane Road, and I apologize for not having read what you have presented. Where is the Fish Lake Trail connection over the railroad in this plan? I realize that's City of Spokane, so for decades now, we've been talking about who can take responsibility for that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment again. And this is, I suppose that jurisdictional boundaries are not something that's visible to the average person. This is not a county jurisdiction. This is not Ken County right of way. This is a City of Spokane project. And in fact, they have to, they just got CRP funding. Not very much, but their projects are funded for the Fish Lake Trail. If you want the detailed components of what they're going to do for the Fish Lake Trail, I would be happy to set you up with the people that are working on it, that actually worked on the grant to receive the funding and the engineers and the planners that are working on those improvements. That would be great. It's going to be a great plan. In this document, you'll be able to see where the county, well, actually, the whole entire county, whether it's in the City of Spokane or this jurisdiction of Spokane County is in the document. It lays it out so you can see. But the specifics of the city's plan and their improvements, I don't have those. But like I said, I would be happy to get them for you because it will be a good project and it will be a really fun completion and a good addition to the general Class One Trails within the county.
Did that answer your question? That's why you're here.
That is why you're here, and we need people to bring attention to it. But the other thing that's so hard is that these projects take like years to complete. We just completed a project, a Greenway project that we started in 2018. So unfortunately, that's just the kind of the nature of what we do is that it can take a long time to get things done. But I think that we're all really committed to working on these projects and making it better for everybody.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you. Open mic?
Right, right. This is Paul Crop again. I was scratching my head about this very issue when on page 66, there's a sort of inventory of Class One Shared Use Pathways that does not include the Fish Lake Trail. And it's just, just a head scratcher. However, on page 30, it is mentioned about among the, quote, "among the facilities that provide 94 miles of shared use paths that county residents can use to travel to desired destinations or to be used as a safe place to bicycle or roll." It's just a head scratcher. I wish you would consider adding the Fish Lake Trail in the appropriate, at least in this inventory.
I thank you, Paul, for your comment. I wish I had that map up in front of me because as to my, the best of my knowledge, it is in there. It, the Fish Lake Trail is east of Cheney and it extends southwest in Spokane County, and that should be included. And in fact, that's not necessarily even Spokane County data. That is a regional plan, that data that we, that I've collected from SRTC, I believe. And it's updated every year through all of the jurisdictions, through Michael Redlinger at SRTC and with, obviously with my help as well. And that, that hasn't changed. If you are talking specifically to the planned improvements to the Fish Lake Trail, they're not complete, and once they're updated, then it will be added. I don't know how else to answer that question besides that it's shared data that should be included in there. I can go double check it, and if it's not there, I will add it. Certainly, I'll get our GIS team to add that on there. But in my mind, I'm thinking that I can see it in my head where it is on that map.
Paul, does that make any sense? Is it gone, is it gone already? Paul, did that answer, did that answer your question? Or help in any way?
I didn't realize I got, am I unmuted again?
Yeah, you can speak.
Okay, I'm not interested in a specific project. And I, and I'm not even sure I understand where that map is. My concern is that it's left out of the inventory of Class One Shared Use Pathways, as it, but you're going to include the Centennial Trail and you're, and also the you, you mentioned the Columbia Plateau Trail that ends, you know, and, and the Fish Lake Trail is a connection that connects the rest of the county down to ultimately the Centennial Trail. I just regret that it's, that it's missing from these inventories and not acknowledged as a key link.
Do, do you think that the Columbia Plateau Trail and the Fish Lake Trail might be connected?
Absolutely. That's the whole point of the bridge.
Yeah, and, and that is the name of that trail officially. And so if you want, I can go back into that document and put parentheses also known as the Fish Lake Trail or connecting to the Fish Lake Trail, but they're the same thing.
I have one other, I have one other comment. Now, I'm looking at a version of this document that is dated April 18th. Now, there's some chance that I'm not looking at the, at the most current version, but that's always, that's, that could always happen. But I, I do find in the list of definitions on page five that the complete street definition is blank.
Although that's a good catch then. Yeah. Well, if the complete streets definition is blank on my version, then I'll definitely add that in.
Well, so which, but which definition will you use?
I'll use a one that's through Smart Growth America. I wrote the Complete Streets ordinance that's passed, and I work with CIB on it. They've, they actually approved it. So I can get a definition if it's, unless it's like showing up blank on your Adobe document or something like that. But I can, I can add that. That's, that would be a great catch if it's actually blank.
Well, you know, it's as, as it were fundamental because you talk about complete streets all the time. So thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Paul.
I'll just try, I think, I think Paul has a good point about the Fish Lake Trail and Columbia Plateau Trail. They are the same trail effectively. They're part of the same vacated railroad bed, but it may be good to just add some, some mention of the connectivity of those trails. I know it's a long-term goal to finally connect them. A hard task because of two railroad corridors that have to be overcome. But I think it, it is a good note to just sort of draw that connective tissue in whichever way you think makes the most sense.
Noted.
Other comments?
I have a comment for one or the other, from our audience that came in earlier in regards to this Fish Trap Trail. I'm not aware of what the name is exactly, but anyway, from what was just explained by, by Jamie, meaning the parentheses of included in that, does that help you clarify? Again, I'm just here to try to make headway.
Yeah, yes. You said yes. Other comments? Melissa?
I just want to commend you and your staff. You guys are all involved in some really heavy lifting that you have been for.
Thank you.
Several years and for the foreseeable future. I think it's really important to note how much attention you've paid to the public comments. I know that you've been out in the public. And not everybody can make it to that meeting, and often people feel like, well, I didn't get a chance to see Jamie or her staff in person, but you have been out there. Then, so I appreciate all your efforts. It's clear from the comments that you have gotten that connectivity to City of Spokane, state, any, any linkages that can be made and understanding, yes, it does take years when you're talking about working with the railroad. That takes a really long time. So very, very commendable, all the efforts. It's, I don't know that perfect is a word that you can apply to a plan. It's going to constantly be refined. And I, I can already see those wheels turning like, we'll get this adopted. And then we'll keep, we'll be working on it the whole, whole time refining it. So much appreciation for your work, complete streets, connections for all ages and all abilities has really come to the forefront of our communities, to the nation as a whole. And it's, it's great to see it moving forward, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comments.
Bonnie, anything else I have?
I have another comment.
Go forward.
Approximately, if I'm not mistaken, in the last 30 to 60 days, we had a presentation made to us by STA, and I listened to that extensively, and I'm trying to be very, very positive with my comments. We're all living in Spokane County. We're not a we and they and so forth. I mean, we're all one. And I really ask that STA and your department are working together very, very close in trying to resolve our problem, not any one of they or us. I'm just overly concerned about that, and, and I, I wish both sides a lot of luck in working together because sometimes we don't want to give up ownership.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me jump in. We've recently had conversations with the Planning Director at STA to better link their planning system and process into our comprehensive plan process over these next two years. That's not to change or delay the process they're using now to update their own guiding plan, but it's, it's, it's literally the, the effort to integrate transit planning within land use planning, within active transportation planning. They sort of exist together by accident now, and Carl has agreed to integrate that into our system. So we're going to work on how to, how to do this. So for example, rather than a transportation system saying, you know, here's a logical line. We can get an extension to this line with federal funding. The, the added part is where's the growth happening at these edges and how can we incise STA to get out to a particular region that they might have to think about a five or 10 or 15-year plan to get there. But it's now on their horizon as opposed to happening after the fact.
Thank you.
Yeah, I work pretty closely with STA. I'm the Spokane County Representative for Division Connects as well, and I've been working on that plan for, I think, four years now with them. And I work closely with Mike Tressider and Carl often, and on not just that plan, but their other STA plans. So that first last mile link is very important to us and where they can't get, because they, they're limited in what, where they can serve areas too, especially when it starts getting into the county areas. And we do a lot of work trying to get, make sure that people can get to the park and rides, as well as those first last mile connections to STA bus stops too. It's, it's not lost.
After gone, I have gone through this long-range planning, and I really support what Scott is saying, but we all have to work together for the unification of Spokane at this point. So that's my strongest issue with this whole thing. All departments need to work together.
It's a great comment.
Logan, any additional comments from you, sir?
Nope, nothing from me. Thanks for your work on this.
Yeah, you bet. I'll go ahead and make sure that Fish Lake Trail is referenced in connection to the Columbia Plateau Trail as well, because yeah, they are the one and the same.
Thank you. So that would be, when we vote on this, we'll be ass amended for that, or that's, that's a small detail. I wouldn't, I guess we shouldn't be too hung up. Yeah, it's just, yeah, not, not to worry. Okay, any other comments? People sitting here in the audience, that would be the time to keep public testimony moving forward. Regarding the active transportation plan, that is. No one else online? No one in the audience? Going once, going twice? Okay. Without, without objection, public testimony is hereby closed. Chair will entertain a motion to approve this active transportation plan and for recommendation to the county commissioners. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, just with the caveat that the couple amendments we talked about today be addressed before submitting it for approval. And I'm looking for a second.
Okay, thank you, Logan. It has been moved. Second? Second by Melissa Willstruck. Discussion of the commission. Now's the time to discuss the motion. See, no discussion. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor of approval of this measure, of this plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by saying nay? The ayes have it. The motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. We will carry it on to the board.
Staff report.
I have the honor of introducing our team to you today. We're going to walk through a little bit of a presentation, a highlighted version of something that the team will be presenting at. We've now got seven kickoff meetings set up around the county. So they're going to walk you through that and be able to take some questions from you or from the audience. So with that, I'll introduce Tate Andre and Bongo Thompson.
Slow, okay.
This is your first time?
It is, yes.
Don't be, don't be nervous. We're all your friends.
Too late.
Not a problem.
Cool. Yeah, as Scott said, I'm Tate Andre. I'm part of the long-range planning.
Tate Andre?
Tate Andre, yes. And today, we're just going to be going over our kickoff meetings that we're going to be holding at the end of this month and into June. It's not scrolling out. There we go. Cool. So the main purpose of these meetings is beginning that early continuous public participation process. We want to start gathering interest from the community and show how they can get involved and why it's important to get involved. And it also serves as the beginning stage to start educating people and engage the conversation with the community on comprehensive planning and all its various elements. So up here, we have a map of the kickoff locations. We tried to hit community hubs throughout the whole region. So as you can see, we hit Cheney, Medical Lake, Airway, Spokane, and the Valley. However, after some public feedback, we are going to have two more kickoff meetings, but those location, locations at times are to be determined. So what are these forums going to entail? We're going to have a brief profile on Spokane County. So what is the, what's the region look like geographically? What's our household sizes? What's our median incomes and household rents and housing prices? But we're also going to have information on comprehensive plans, what they actually are and how they are implemented. We're going to provide information on each individual element and how people can get involved and why they should get involved. And we're also going to talk about Washington State's Growth Management Act, which governs planning in Washington State. So this slide and the following slides are going to serve as sort of a breakdown of what's going to be presented. We've essentially boiled down a 50-slide presentation to 10 slides for you. So this map is showing the region briefly. It's showing the incorporated cities and towns, as well as our unincorporated urban growth areas. We find it's important to show the unincorporated urban areas, that that's what falls under our jurisdiction. And not a lot of people know the role of the county planning, the, the role of county in planning regionally versus each city and how that. and how that impacts everybody. This graphic was created to visualize what goes into the comprehensive plan and how it's implemented. I find that it's helpful helpful to visualize the comprehensive plan as a policy document and how it sets the base for legislation as well as going over the countywide planning policies as the regional framework that not only affects the creation of our plan, but every jurisdiction in the county. And also the role of the comprehensive plan and shaping other department plans like the one Jamie Hayes presented. So briefly, as you probably know, the G M A was a series of statutes adopted in nineteen ninety that governs comprehensive planning in Washington. It requires counties and cities to develop a comprehensive plan to plan and manage population growth. And it has fifteen goals. I'm not going to name off every single one. But some notable ones are making sure urban growth is in areas with adequate facilities, reducing sprawl and the conversion of undeveloped land into that sprawling low density development. Making sure we have affordable housing and are protecting the environment. And one of the new ones is climate change and resiliency. That's a new element that we were required this periodic session. Excuse me. So the following slides are going to show a breakdown of what we're going to be presenting on each element. Specifically, I'll just be going over the land use and the housing element. But what we'll be touching on for every element is what's its main purpose, what G M A goals is it accomplishing? And why is it important? And if we're we're also going to go over any new requirements that the element may have this periodic session. So as you can see, the main purpose of the land use is to designate the general distribution and location of the uses of land. And this is the basis for the county zoning laws. And this is extremely important for promoting orderly development that provides for adequate housing, social infrastructure, environmental protections, facilitate economic growth, all those. Some plans it meets, urban growth, obviously, we want, it's it's the main thing that plans for making sure we have adequate facilities and it's development in urban areas. And it's also an extremely important tool for reducing sprawl. This is just going over our land uses. It's pretty straightforward. We got residential, commercial, industrial, mixed use lands. But we also have resource lands, which is unique to the county, which is our agricultural forest and mineral lands. So it's important, land use is arguably the most important tool we have as planners to accomplish all those goals relating to housing affordability, facilitating economic growth, making sure we have adequate transportation. But also just creating places that people care about and creating those livable neighborhoods. So finally, housing, following the the same order, the main purpose is to ensure residents have access to quality affordable housing. And this is going to affect housing types and densities, our supply of affordable housing and the proximity of that housing to employment goods and services. Touches on similar planning goals, very important tool in reducing sprawl. It's obviously meeting the housing goal and and planning for and accommodating housing affordable to everybody. Providing for variety of densities and encouraging preservation of housing stock. And in the same way that housing is an important tool to meet or important tool to reduce sprawl and encourage preservation, it is also important in our historic preservation goal as well. Some new state requirements we have, we have to plan for all economic segments of the population. So they break it down by area median income. So we're planning for housing for zero to thirty percent, thirty to fifty percent area median income and so on. And we also have to plan for emergency housing shelters and permanent supportive housing. We have to document document programs and actions needed to achieve those housing goals. We have to identify discriminatory policies and regulations and work to begin undoing them. And we also have to start providing for moderate density housing options in our urban areas. And just some of the things that inform this element, our population growth numbers, our land capacity, which is currently being under being studied. Our housing allocations that we get based off our population and land use capacity, but also data analysis and public outreach. And just examples of what me and Bongo have been doing, who's also on the housing element is looking at meeting in home and rental costs, vacancy rates, what are our housing characteristics? And what's affordable to all those economic segments versus what's the average rent? We've also began coordinating and reaching out to lots of entities. Those are just three examples of many, many more. Our master stakeholder list is about five hundred entities. So lots of outreach going on and coordination among housing people, and that's beginning to start and will continue going forward. And that's all I have for you. So any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, have a question.
Go ahead.
Well done.
Thank you.
It brings back a lot of old memories because I was part of the original group of the the G M A when it came in. Maybe it's the angle I'm looking at. You identified the cities that are also involved in the county. Did I see any notice of there of what each one of them are, what they're called out on the map? Are they just a square? Are they just a marked out area?
It's just marked out. Are you talking about like the blue and then the red unincorporated?
Because it would help and many of people say, well, now where's Liberty Lake at or where's Rockford? I would say that that may be a real help. Again, I didn't see it from that angle, but just for people in the audience.
For sure. No, yeah, that could be something easily changed. I can color coordinate.
Just suggestions.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I forgot I'm in control. This one? And these are posted. We did the classic posted the flyer around town. But like I said, there is going to be two more kickoff locations in the future after that June third date. But yeah, that 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 info is readily available to everybody as well. Yep.
So are each one of those small blue city outlines?
Yeah.
Not home or labeled, I guess.
No, yeah, as Mr. Hayes said.
I mean, I see Medical Lake and Cheney, but I don't see like Rockford and, you know, okay.
Yeah, so this map is zoomed in for this display purposes. I have the full, oops, excuse me, the full map. So all those southern towns are not shown on this map specifically. I believe in the present, the kickoff presentation, I can make sure that the full map is displayed. This one was created specifically for you. Yeah, this is just the meetings, yeah.
Am I correct in stating that there's what thirteen or fourteen existing cities in the county of Spokane?
Yes, I think I.
And back then, then things have changed. I assume that the outlined cities are fully aware of what the process you're going through and have participated in sharing with you where they fit into the the big, big picture.
Yeah, we've begun that outreach and coordinating with all the cities for our kickoffs. Yeah, if they're interested. We have a whole mailing list of people, so.
This is just sort of a random question, but I see that the Air Force Base is highlighted here. Is the Air Force Base considered an incorporated place?
It is, and I had that same question where I looked it up, but it is an incorporated area.
Interesting. I did not know that.
I I just have a question, how or what is the interaction protocol with the steering committee? Or the entire county, the growth steering committee?
Core for.
Just with the comprehensive planning process and the information that has to be used, the inventories that have to be used, what is there? Is there any?
Yeah, Bongo, you want to chime in? I don't know if I have a good answer to that.
So we were before the steering committee yesterday and my understanding and I was looking to see if Scott was still here to correct me. I think what it generally is is when we have a big item in front of us, we take it before them and say, hey, here's what we have. What do you think? You know, so we have time to make adjustments before it's adopted. That's kind of the way we've currently been approaching it. And as we continue, I imagine that'll change and, you know, things will morph. But does that make sense? That's sort of what we've been doing currently.
Yeah, I was just trying to think about the countywide planning policies and I know that they're integrated into this and I know that the steering committee has some oversight of the countywide planning policies.
Certainly, and we actually, we presented before them just yesterday on the countywide planning policies and there's discussion about potentially having a subcommittee of the S E O potentially with electeds or, we haven't figured that out quite yet, but to look specifically at C P Ps. Yeah.
So I'm 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 not going to say this very diplomatically. So those countywide planning policies, the intent is that it'll keep everybody honest in developing their comprehensive plans if they.
Your your words, not mine, but.
No, that's why I said I wasn't very, I wasn't being very diplomatic.
They they do guide everyone's everyone's comprehensive plans and we're developing them in line with everyone else. So there's there's not going to be any any shocks for any of the cities when when these are adopted. This is going to go through S E O, developed with, you know, City of Spokane, City of the Valley. So everyone's going to know what's coming before them.
Thank you for permitting my latitude.
Did I get it done? Lonnie, I think. Logan, back to you, my friend. Anything to say, anything else to add? Okay. That concludes your.
Yep, that was everything I had for you.
Do we expect anyone else from your team to to speak?
Uh, no, that I was the main person presenting. Everybody was just on deck.
Short straw.
Yeah.
Very good. All right.
Could you briefly introduce them again? Because it's been a long time since I've been.
Yeah, I can. Everybody else can come and show their face.
Yeah, I'm Bongo Thompson. I'm with Tate on the housing element and also on the transportation element with with Joshua Warwick. If you if you want.
Let them each come up here and get personally introduced. That's what we need.
Sure, I'm Joshua Warwick. I'm the planner here. I'm working on the transportation element, rural element, natural, natural environment, natural resources and I made the public participation program that you guys voted on today.
Thank you.
Well, I'm Graham Zikafus. I'm currently working on the climate change and resiliency element. Just a a new one, going to be a new one for our comprehensive plan and I'm also uh, working on the land capacity analysis.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Weir and I'm working on the capital facilities element as well as updating the coordinated water system plan.
Great, thanks.
Just coming back up, close out. Is there anything else from you guys?
Okay.
Cool.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
And you didn't really use any notes. You you glanced at your presentation, but you had everything completely commemor.
Thank you.
That's going to bode well for the public hearings, all you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. On my own, Scott's not here now. So I better I better do this by the book. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes of April the twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four. You have a copy of the minutes in your packet. Please read them. Hopefully you have before. Any corrections? Or comments? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt these minutes to April twenty fourth.
I so move to accept the minutes of last meeting.
All right. Second from Logan. Thank you. There's no discussion on a primary motion like this. All those in favor of adopting the minutes of April twenty fifth, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Those minutes are hereby adopted. The next meeting will be May the thirtieth and on June the thirteenth. Is that correct, Ella? You're in charge now, actually, since Scott's not here, so we'll follow your lead. With the commission before I move for adjournment, want to say anything for the record?
I was just looking at our May meeting agenda. I understand Scott's not in the room, although I can't see that, but I understand Scott's not there. So I'm a little bit. I just, I'm curious about those two agenda items, but I'll just have to follow up with him in an email. It sounds like both the agriculture slaughterhouse and the gun club will be back before us.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I know last time we had been discussing the text changing and seeing how that's moving forward. That was two weeks ago and I assume it's moving forward. And in regards to the proposal for the the use of the facility located on the Palouse Highway, the old Palouse Highway. And I was just wondering how that's moving forward, if there's any clue, action.
Oh, it'll probably be.
And Scott's not here, so I and I didn't realize that, so.
Yeah, he has to be in Yakima for a transportation meeting or something, so we were lucky to have him for the first portion of the meeting.
Thank you. Just just trying to keep things moving forward.
That was a that was a maybe, Clyde.
That was definitely a maybe. My whole life is a maybe.
Okay, you've had the last word. Okay, there there you go. Anything else to come before this this body? If not, the chair will attend a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Melissa. Thank you, Logan. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
All right.
Hi, all those opposed by saying nay, we are hereby adjourned.
Wow, one hour. Impressed with us, impressed with us.
It is. Thank you, Logan.
Have a good one, everybody. See you in person next time.
Ten oh two. Thanks, Ella. Thank you, Scott, wherever you are.